Manager, I'm gonna turn it over to you to recognize the next briefing on Walter E. Long.
Yeah, thanks Mayor and Council. We're gonna ask A T A V to shift over Kimberly McNeely, who's gonna be walking through this next presentation. This is the Vision Plan for Walter E. Long. And, you know, a lot of things were happening over the last year, and this was something that has garnered a lot of interest, and we've been doing a lot of staff work and community work over the last two years. But partly because of COVID, we had hesitated to bring this to you. We're doing a little bit of cleanup work now, and we're ready to bring this presentation to Council for your approval on Thursday. With that, I'll turn it over to Kimberly McNeely, our Director of Parks and Recreation.
Thank you, City Manager. If I could ask our A V team to also move over Greg Montez. He is our Planning Department Program Manager, and I'm joined by him in case there's some specific questions about the plan that I'm unable to answer. And if the A V team could also bring up the presentation, that would be super great. Thank you. So this presentation is obviously about the Walter E. Long Vision Plan. I'm hoping to cover a process overview, so you understand the process that we went through that completed this plan, the resulting foundational framework that we would be using as guidance in the future, some conceptual features and amenities that you we might be able to find in this particular plan, and then also a phased development recommendation that includes estimated costs and a very brief conversation about public-private partnership opportunities. So the next slide, please. So just as an overview, to give you some conceptual understanding of the size of Walter E. Long, we've provided you with two parks that you may be familiar with. And so Walter E. Long is seven times as large as Zilker Park. It is a metropolitan park, and it serves a region or a large area, the entire city, is something that we would hope that everyone who was in the city would have an opportunity to access this. But because it is in the northeast corner of our city, it is also utilized by individuals from outside the city, and I'll talk a little bit about that. The park plan develops an overall vision for the plan. It identifies some recreational uses that we would use as guidance in the future. It prioritizes initial development, and it serves as a document for us to reference for when we would like to develop something in a second or a third phase. It has, like I said, it has some foundational concepts as a part of this plan, and then it also suggests some features that might be interesting to our community based upon the feedback that they provided. Next slide, please. So as part of our process, please know that we offer we had multiple community engagement opportunities. And so we had a technical advisory group. We had stakeholder focus groups that included entities that were of specific interest to this area, fishing groups, community groups, including the rodeo. We had public events and public interaction opportunities. We actually went to the park itself and did intercept surveys. People could come. These are pictures of Decker Lake Middle School, where people were able to participate in meetings. We had online engagement surveys, and of those online engagement surveys, we collected 3,103 general survey responses. And then we had a very targeted survey about specific amenities that garnered 1,886 survey responses for a total of 4,989 online survey responses. To give you an idea of the people who responded, about 10% of the individuals that responded in the survey were specific to the 78724 ZIP code, which is the ZIP code in which Walter E. Long resides. 25% of the people who responded were within the surrounding ZIP codes that actually touched the 2.24, I'm sorry, the 7878724 ZIP code. 40% of the people who responded beyond the 78724 and the surrounding ZIP codes were City of Austin residents. And then there was about a third of the individuals who added in ZIP codes outside of Austin who utilized this park because of it is in the northeast corner of Austin. And we've also went to boards and commissions, which I'll talk about at the very end of this of this presentation. Next slide, please. So as part of the as part of the process overview, we also took a look at the history of the park, and I thought it might be interesting to to counsel and to the mayor that there was an initial master plan completed in 1966. And that, interestingly enough, that master plan has some various had some similarities to the current master, and I apologize for saying master plan, it's vision plan. I know we're transitioning to the new language, and I will I will do better with regards to that. This particular plan was called Master Plan. Our new language is Vision Plan. But it has some the historical perspective you'll see in the new features. You'll see things like water access, boating, fishing. This has this particular plan in 1966 also showed different uses and zones, which you'll also see in the future plan. It highlighted camping and picnicking, and it also really highlighted things that had to do with ecotourism. I'm not sure if we used that phrase in 1966, but it certainly the concept of this particular plan are very similar to what what you'll see in the new in the new plan. Next slide, please. Also, part of our process overview at council's direction, we did work with our friends in Economic Development to determine if there were opportunities or a demand for alternative economic starters or economic opportunities within the park itself. So could we be looking at this park as a way to to as pathways for economic growth, as pathways for job creation, as pathways for resolving housing issues? And this particular this is a slide that came from a report that was done by the Economic and Planning Systems, and it was under the direction of our E D D of Economic Development. They helped us with this. And basically, what this is telling us is that there's going to be 152% increase in households from the time when this plan was done into into the future, and that that will also result in increased retail square footage. It will also result in office and commercial space and hotel space outside of the actual boundaries of the park. And so basically, what what the the recommendation from EPS was is that the park should focus on job growth and options for services and goods that are recreational in nature, because it appears as though, or at least the prediction is, that things that a community needs that are outside of a park will be taken care of in the surrounding developments. Next slide, please. So this right here talks a little bit about those those foundational frameworks that I was that I mentioned in the very beginning. And so basically, this particular slide took a look at the topography and the environmental features of this park, and it showed us that there are particular places where it is very appropriate for us to develop and be able to have buildings and surface structure and parking lots and different kinds of infrastructure that are really more about active kinds of things that are happening in the park. And then there also is areas that are should have very limited construction and very limited areas because they're considered more environmentally sensitive, and they are preserves, or they're wetlands, or they're part of a already established wildlife sanctuary. So when you see the Vision Plan in the future, you'll notice that it will be consistent with this particular analysis of where things can be can be built. And so this is a foundational concept that I think will carry through regardless of the features or the specific amenities that are chosen in the future. We would be following this as a foundational concept. Next slide, please. So to go along with those with the idea of having certain areas that are developable that you can actually develop in, that you can build structures in, there are we've also tried to determine what would those structures look like. And we wanted to make sure as a foundational concept that we have consistent uses for the areas that can be developed. So in the areas that are highly developed, we would have active sports and organized sorts of things. I said that in the earlier, but this is earlier slide. This is just another way of looking at it, that you would have things that are highly developed that would be active, and we would have arts and culture in certain areas where you could develop spaces that would allow that. And then you'd have passive and natural spaces. So again, another foundational concept that we would fall back on when we're in the future choosing specific amenities. Next slide, please. And so this was a preferred framework plan. So when we worked with the community and we did all of the community engagement, we presented to the community multiple options of what a Vision Plan could look like for Walter E. Long. And what this plan was, was the plan that the majority of individuals who participated in community engagement said that they thought would be the most acceptable, the most interesting, the thing that would serve the most individuals. And you can see that it has a variety of activities, and it has a variety of active spaces as well as passive spaces. It was one of three plans that was presented, and it was the preferred plan. And when you have a chance to look at the at the document that's online, or we can send it to you via PDF, you will be able to see exactly all of those different all those different activities. But it does range from things like camping to trail walking, to boat launches, to amphitheaters and cultural arts spaces where performance art can occur. It's consistent with this layout here of where things are active and passive is consistent with that foundation. And it's also, again, interestingly, it's very consistent or has many similarities to the 1966 plan. Next slide, please. So here's where we get into the idea of us having some more conceptual ideas of what could go into each area of the park. And so while we had a foundation where we just named things active and passive, and we decided whether it was developable or not developable, here's where we say these are kind of the appropriate things that could go into this space based upon the feedback that we received from the community members. So when community members said we'd like to see trails, we were able to plot that on this map as a possible feature as to where trails would be most appropriate. When a community members told us that we'd love to see performing arts or an opportunity to bring music or bring theater to this space, we were able to determine the most appropriate space that that kind of amenity could could occur. Sports courts, where should there be boat launches and where and should there be more boat launches? That's what we heard from the community. And so you will see from this particular plan, which you would want to look at the plan, and you'd want to obviously enlarge this, but you'd be able to see all the different features that folks said were interesting to them and that they would be that would be desirable for this park and where they are plotted on this particular Vision Plan for the future. I want to just bring your attention to the lower left-hand corner where it says Expo Center. And you will notice that in that space, that is not very green. There's just a couple of buildings. When the Parks and Recreation Department embarked upon this Vision Plan, we did reference the Hunden Report, which was the existing report at the time as to how that particular Expo Center space would be used. And you'll notice that, as is appropriate with developability, this particular area adjacent to the Expo Center is absolutely filled with active recreational opportunities. This is where the amphitheater is located. This is where the sports courts are located. This is where the active space and the infrastructure, the majority of infrastructure would would be developed in this particular plan. And while there are synergies with the Expo Center and their shared parking opportunities and perhaps even shared amenity opportunities, I'd also like to mention that this could also be a plan that stands on its own. Whether the Expo Center is looked at for alternative uses, or if it's being reconfigured in some way, this particular plan, the Walter E. Long Vision Plan, will stand alone as its own plan. It is not contingent upon the future of the Expo Center or the future uses of the Expo Center. And this plan will show you everything from sports areas, playgrounds, boat houses, marinas, boat launches, cabins, and camping spaces. It is emphasis on sort of that performing arts and that cultural arts space, and then also some of that ecotourism opportunities. And this is just a bird's eye view of the entire of the entire plan. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. All right. One thing that we wanted to take into consideration was the circulation of the plan and also the accessibility of this park from the surrounding area. So as you'll recall, in the very beginning of the presentation, I talked about the development that was, oops, if we could go back one. We talked a little bit about the development of the surrounding area. And so the the slide that says circulation around the park shows you how the up and coming developments that are happening in that space would be able to access the park either through vehicular access or through bike or pedestrian access. And it also talks about the number of individuals based upon that economic development report that we received, what the population estimates are expected to be as that particular as those particular developments grow. And so I wanted to make sure that I showed you that there were that it was accessible not just by car, but it's accessible via bike and through hiking opportunities. It's also important to note that there is an equestrian trail there. Obviously, that would have some real synergies with things that might happen at the Expo Center. But an equestrian trail is a is a contemplated feature. It's not a done deal, right? We would have to have more conversations about what it is that trails should look like. Next slide, please. So this is just another illustration of the different areas of the park. Because this is such a large park, we would want to consider area development or development of this space in multiple areas. And each of these multiple areas have its own sort of theme that goes along with the activities that are happening in that particular area. Again, this is based upon the community feedback and the things that the community told us that they would like to see in this park. And so we tried to put those kinds of amenities and activities in the areas that were the appropriate for that type of development. And so you'll notice that we have the Expo Center area where I talked about how that's kind of the active area. Area number two is the Lakeside Park. So this is where we have a lot of those features that would enhance the user experience. It's right along the water. There's trails in there. Post Oak Savannah is area number three. You know, it's more of a passive area. So I won't read all of these to you because I know that you can read yourself. But basically, this just gives you a description, again, consistent with those foundational items that I showed you earlier. Next slide, please. So the next slide is going to show you an idea of of some conceptual features that is part of how we would improve the existing park. So when you go to Walter E. Long, right now, you drive into Walter E. Long, and this is the space that is most this is the space that is utilized by the public. And so this is a enhanced look at what it could look like instead of what it currently looks like. So we have a we have a current state of the park, but this is our vision for what we would love this this park to look like in the future. And you can see that it has a lot of a lot of features that have to do with the water. It has a fishing pier. It has a marina or a boat space and a boat dock. It has a beach access. And this is how many much of that space is utilized right now. And so it would be the Parks and Recreation Department's recommendation to consider improving this space first to enhance the features that are already readily used, provide some more parking, provide some more amenities in the space so that individuals could enjoy this as a family. You can see that on the left-hand side of this, there are some sports courts. Those happen to look like soccer courts. There again, that is just a picture of an amenity that could be there. Those could be volleyball courts. Those could be basketball courts. Those could be footsaw courts. They could be something else. They could be tennis, or they could be any combination of those things. But the idea is, is that that would be family oriented and something that families could come and enjoy pavilion and picnic space. So the Parks and Recreation Department would recommend that if we were going to begin to invest in this park, we would want to begin by investing in this space. If you go to the next slide, another area of consideration that the Parks and Recreation Department believes would be an appropriate investment in the early phases of this park development is this active area. And the reason why we think the active area has great potential is it has potential for public-private partnerships. It's the cultural arts sort of area. It could be used as a as a music venue. It could be used as a performing arts venue. It could be used for events. It can be used for food trailers. Again, it has some synergies if the Expo Center is to be developed and as it is, or it could also morph a little bit to be able to to accommodate whatever it is that the Expo Center space would would eventually be. We believe that with there being music and performing arts, that there's multiple partners in the community that may be interested in partnering with us. And so this would be an area that we would really like to focus on as as part of our initial phases of the park. Next. So you can see that these are the projected costs related to to the park. And you can see that Zone B and Zone A, those were the two areas that I suggested that the Parks and Recreation Department would look at to first begin their development. And the price tags associated with that are are written there. And so this is why we believe it's important for us to think about revenue streams that could help support the park, have about private partnerships that could help support the park, even perhaps a conservancy like we have in other areas of the Parks and Recreation Department. So there's lots of options for us to to develop this park with the community and in cooperation with the community. But I wanted to be forthcoming with the costs. And we have to remember that that while we have this park is, I just wanted to remind everybody that this park is seven times the size of Zilker Park, and it took us, you know, a number of decades to actually develop Zilker Park. So I just wanted to put that into context, because I know sometimes the price tag feels a little bit a little bit oppressive, but it's something that we can we can work through, and we can find creative ways in which to fund. If we could go to the next slide, please. These were just overviews of the potential Phase One cost. So this you can see Phase One, that's the area that I talked about where we have the existing uses. And so these were just some cost estimates that would go along with the gates and the restrooms and the picnic areas and certain kinds of infrastructure. And it also shows you the areas that we may have partnership opportunities, like with a rowing with a rowing club or with a boat concession, or perhaps other water activity concessions. And so I just wanted to give you an idea of that sort of cost range. And then the last slide, please, is our next steps. So our next steps, well, please know that we did go to the Parks Board June 25, 2019. I believe that Greg and Leanna were the presenters for that particular presentation, and also to the Environmental Commission in July 17, 2019. And we're coming today before you with this presentation. And certainly, we would love to see this considered on September 3, but understand there may be some discussions that need to be had and will be taking your direction. And then we the next phases after approval would be design and construction on a limited scale. So we have already put aside approximately 3.5 million, and we are engaging partners, very, very initially engaging partners, because we don't have an approved plan about how we might be able to start that initial development in the space that's already used. And then we would obviously be coming back to council for any types of designs and final cost approvals for any sorts of construction that would happen. And I'm available for questions.
Thank you for the presentation. Colleagues, questions? Councilmember Harper-Madison, then Councilmember Flanagan.
I actually, I was just gonna say, I think I'm starting to have a little bit of a tech issue because all of y'all's videos are going weird. So I'm gonna fortify my my Wi-Fi situation with the cord real quick. So I'll defer to Councilmember Flanagan. I'll be right back.
By the way, we can see you really well. Councilmember Flanagan.
Well, I mean, I hate to go in front of Councilmember Madison, since this is in District One, but I have many, many questions. Maybe not all of them we'll dig into today. This is a big plan. This is a big plan. On some of the slides, there was it talked about regional impact. And Ms. McNeely, you mentioned regional partners, but I don't know that you closed the loop on that conversation.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. I did not. So we've had conversations with everybody from, well, the range from folks from Texas Rowing to UT Rowing. We've had conversations with individuals who are interested in fishing and boating sorts of concessions. We've had conversations with individuals who have expressed interest in events and in opportunities for performing arts facilities. We've had just general conversations with the community about opportunities for very community-based sorts of of activities that might be revenue generations, like food trucks or or green, I can't think of the what do you sell when you sell vegetables and fruits for to people. But I can't think of the name.
Farmers markets.
Farmers markets. Thank you. Sorry about that. Farmers markets and those sorts of things. So when I talk about regionally, we've tried to take a look at different partners that could bring different different aspects to the park, something that would be large as well as something that could be very community-based.
I was hoping you were gonna talk about Travis County.
Well, thank you for thank you for the prompt. There has been some conversations with Travis County, and specifically, those conversations have been about the Expo Center. And those conversations have not been unique to the Parks and Recreation Department, but they absolutely have included our friends in Economic Development. And they've absolutely included, at the time, it was Judge Eckhart. And those conversations have been stalled with regards to the Expo Center. We've also talked with the rodeo folks and understood what they're what they would prefer to happen with that particular space and who they would prefer to be partners with. But it is it is incumbent upon us as a as a city department to get back on the horse, if you will, to be able to begin those conversations again. We started down that path, and then COVID hit, and we have not we have not come to conclusions as to what a really solid partnership that would be beneficial to both entities. We have not determined what that would finally look like.
But I'm I'm not even really talking about the Expo Center. There's a lot of conversation we don't need to go into today on on that. On one slide, there was a an E D D assessment about the future growth in a five-mile radius. Did did E D D provide for you how much of that was going to be in our taxable jurisdiction versus outside our taxable jurisdiction?
I don't know that they did, Councilmember, but I could go back in the report and find out for you. I don't I don't recall. So I don't want to say if they did or did not, but I absolutely could get you that information.
Yeah, I think that's an important element of this, right? And and on the backside of Walter E. Long, you have, I think, Wild Horse is like really adjacent to, which is a Travis County Pid, which would not have to pay any of the costs of this park, but but would absolutely be one of the primary users of this park, which, you know, I have a lot of issues with how how that works.
And Council, if I could add to that, I think, taking your lead, we have had conversations about TERS, you know, tax incremental redevelopment zones, but that's absolutely something that the county would have to be they would have to consider, right? Because, to your point, a lot of the taxable area is not necessarily part is not necessarily City of Austin, but is also county. So those, again, on the very surface, those conversations have been had, but we've never come to a final conclusion of how we could best partner.
And I worry about the operations and ongoing maintenance as much as I do about the initial capital. So I mean, there's two different questions. When you had the slide about the input process. When you had the slide about the input process, you know, it triggers me when I see a graphic that says, "Put a sticker on the map where you live", and my district isn't even on the map. So I'm curious if you have a breakdown, in any sense. It could be, you know, north, south, west, east, or by district or whatever, about how much input was provided in this plan?
I'm going to ask, I hope that we moved over Greg Montez. I think I'm going to ask that he be able to answer to that question because he probably has, either he knows the answer or he can get you the answer.
Thanks, Kim. Greg Montez, Parks and Recreation Department, Hunting Division. Councilmember, to answer your question, we had survey and data from everybody that participated. As the director mentioned, there was nearly 5,000 folks that participated. We did not collect, other than the zip code that the participant lived in, we only had the breakdown of the zip code where they lived. So we'd have to look back into that. I don't know that we have anything that documents exactly the percentage of people that might be in a particular district, but I could look with the.
Zip codes, they would be fine, right? I mean, just to provide zip codes would be fine because I can scan a list of zip codes and kind of get a sense of what parts of town are weighing in.
Yeah.
And to be clear, right, if this was a neighborhood park or one where we expected a small area of service, then I wouldn't have asked that question. But this is obviously a gigantic amenity that would serve the whole region.
And what might be helpful too, Councilmember, is I believe we have a map exhibit that might show where people were residing when they were participating in this process. Would we have that data that we could send you?
That's great. In the public engagement process, how is the public informed about cost and timeline when they're doing their visioning work?
Well, we obviously have to lay out the process for that. We have to obviously inform the community stakeholders that this is the front end of a development of a park. So they're in the visioning exercise, but the next step is obviously then to go through the approval process, which is where we're at now. Once that is done, we then have to inform them as well that there's going to be a design element and associated costs with the development of the park. The information that Kimberly shared with you was shared with the community as well. So they're aware of the costs associated with this. And those costs are obviously estimates right now. So that information is shared with them upfront. That information, again, will be shared with them, as the director mentioned, when we go through the design phase, which includes another public engagement opportunity for those stakeholders.
So there's more public engagement to come?
There usually is in our design phase because this vision plan is really trying to designate uses in an area for the park. As the director mentioned, we showed the current location of our park and it showed soccer fields. But what we're trying to show through that illustration is that this is a family-active area. Once we get into the design phase, folks may want to add basketball courts or tennis courts, volleyball courts, or multipurpose fields that are not specifically designed for soccer only. So the idea is that during the design phase, we get a little bit more detail as to what is needed by the community. And we obviously outreach to the same folks and we try to expand that because we know demographics move and change in the areas.
Kim, do you know off the top of your head if the entirety of Walthery Long is dedicated parkland?
You'll see a little space that's carved out that I believe Austin Energy owns.
Yeah.
Right? And other than that, to my knowledge, the entirety of Walthery Long, including the space that the Expo Center is on, is dedicated parkland.
And did you say that Parks has already set aside $3.5 million? I think I missed what that was for.
Yeah. We set aside $3.5 million before this plan had been approved to be able to immediately do something once the plan is approved, some sort of infrastructure, better roads, you know, improve the space where they're trying to launch their boats, fix up some picnic pavilions, do ADA accessibility in the restrooms or improve the restroom. So we have some money set aside to do some immediate things so that folks, after this is approved, can see some immediate response to.
Was that general fund or part of the bond?
Part of the bond. It was part of the bond and it was part of the Metropolitan Park category.
Okay. So I mean, that's the end of my question. And I just want to say, you know, I know, I've spoken to a lot of staff about this and I have affectionately described this plan as Six Flags Over Decker. It is a gigantic plan with a gigantic price tag. And, you know, there's a real fine line between a vision and a hallucination. And I'm really concerned about this process that we seem to follow, where we go to the public with basically no guardrails and say, "What would you like to see?" And then the council's not involved. We're the ones that have to make the hard decisions, but we're not involved until the end. And now we're presented with a plan which looks like we're promising the public a lot of really cool amenities. There's a Ferris wheel on this plan, for crying out loud. And an $800 million vision plan was put on the addendum. There is, under no circumstances can I vote for it this week. There is a lot of thought and work to be done here for us to think about, are we saying, given all the other needs of this community, that we're willing to put an $800 million vision plan in? I mean, I'm not sure this is where I would put the next 3.5 million, frankly. There are a lot of really critical needs in neighborhood parks and other parts of the city right now. And I appreciate a long-term vision, but, you know, this is a pretty shiny object and I just can't, I can't see, given all the other constraints that we're operating under, how we can move forward on this without a lot more work from the council.
Councilmember Harper-Madison.
I'm all fixed up now, thank you. And Jimmy, while I can appreciate your operating indifference to me because this is District One, I really appreciate that you went first because you asked literally all of my questions, including, and this is sort of the lowest possible level, the Ferris wheel, you know, just some considerations around operations and maintenance and what does that even look like? But I will say, I'd like to keep it higher level and just say, I absolutely appreciate the time and the effort that went into this process. I cannot even begin to imagine the amount of work and time that our Parks folks put into this vision plan and the amount of time and effort that the community put into their contributions to the dialogue. But very much like my colleague, I have seven pages worth of questions. And I think those are best asked outside of the setting. I think this was a great opportunity to say, "I know that this was hard work. I know that this was a lot of work." It is not lost on me, however, that there is still a lot more work to be done. Walthery Long, this massive regional park, is one of five extraordinarily important assets within a 1.6-mile radius of one another. So we have the, like, you know, Director McNeely pointed out, we have that, you know, Austin Energy has a site right there on the lake. We have the Expo Center. We have Colony Park that's happening. We have the Metropolitan Park right around the corner that's happening. And then so many other things. So I think it is absolutely at our long-term, greatest good, best interest as a municipality to think about all these things as a combined sort of suite of assets as opposed to one-off assets, especially one like this one that's just so massive. So there are a lot more questions we need to ask and answer. There's a lot more time that we need to put into this. And so I also have a great deal of concerns about being able to move forward without having some of those questions asked and/or answered, in which case I'd like to sort of think through, what if we had a little more time and massage it more before we're asking myself and my colleagues, frankly, to say yes? I'm also hesitant to say yes today. So rather, I'm not sure who I'm asking that question. What are our options for giving this just a little more time to talk through some more questions and concerns?
Director McNeely, what kind of time pressures are you working under for this?
So, obviously, it's been an entire year since we have always brought the plan to the Parks Board. So the time constraints are minimal, right? I think that the department would like to deliver on a promise to the community, but I understand that council would like to look at it a little more, a little differently or more holistically, or as, if I could just use Councilmember Harper-Madison's phrase, a suite of assets, and certainly we understand that. We could, as a staff, certainly, we could withdraw and come back at a time after we've been able to answer the many questions of the council members in separate meetings. Of course, council always has the, you can always postpone. So I think our biggest, maybe, I think our biggest concern, I won't say maybe, I think our biggest concern is just being able to deliver something to the public. We do have, you know, we do have some mandates or regulations in place that say that we're not to move forward with any kinds of improvements until we have something that is approved by council. So, you know, we can work towards that. And I'm sure that the community understands how important it is to look at this as a suite of assets or as more holistically. And the sooner that we can do that, the better we will feel about delivering something to the community.
Thank you. Councilmember Renteria?
Yes, Mayor. This is one of the parks that I do go to. It needs a lot of love. It's more of what I would call a primitive-type park in the sense that if you look at all the parks, you know, they're, there's hardly any shade, there are very few trees, no covered picnic tables at all. You know, I think that even presently, there's just portables there for restrooms. I don't know if there's any permanent restrooms there, but there might be. There, I think there's some up there on the hill. But it needs a lot of love and I don't think we, I mean, I know that this park, you have to pay to go into this park. There's a fee associated with all the regional parks. You just don't walk in there and go free. And so, you know, it needs some love and I would hate to delay the $3.5 million improvements to it. I think that people will use it even more if they had more, you know, ability to have more activities there. And so the big improvement there, the $8 million, that's a dream. You know, I don't see it being done anytime soon unless we go for a big, major bond election to the voters, which would probably be way down the road. So, you know, but it does need a lot of improvement. And people really want to have something down there. It's just been so many years of not, of being neglected and no investment done in it. So I personally would like to see something getting done down there that we could start seeing and enjoying.
Councilmember Kitchen.
I would say we're taking a bit more time, but as long, I would suggest postponing what we're doing because I do think there needs to be time for people to get their questions answered. But at the same time, it is important to move forward with it. So perhaps there'd be an amount of time that it could be postponed for that the council members could ask questions. I would also say that I would be thinking of this in terms of a long-term plan. I assume that's what is intended because it's a vision plan. Is that the right way to think about it?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a particular timeframe put on it or is it just envisioned as a long-term vision?
It's envisioned as a long-term plan. And typically, as bond programs or opportunities for public-private partnerships present themselves, then we take a look back at the vision plan and we determine what would be the next phase or what's the next opportunity for us to improve that space and we would so incrementally over time. And it would be a combination, of course. I think that it would require some bond, but it would also have other creative ways of funding it that could present themselves. We would like to explore those too.
Okay, well, I would say that I do share the interest in looking at how all those things work together, particularly from a funding standpoint, so we could, you know. But I understand that where we're at right now is just a vision plan. We're not funding this plan right now. That's a lot more work that needs to happen. I'm also excited about this. This is a fabulous entity for our community. And I would be in favor of, for me, I want to see a vision of what we would really like it to be, understanding that it's now, we're not going to be voting tomorrow to fund it because it's not our top priority today. But that doesn't mean that we don't want to work towards an amenity that, as, you know, as Councilmember Renteria was saying, can really be an amazing amenity for the whole city, especially for that area of town. So I'm happy to have an aspirational vision for this park and I'm excited about it. I think it's a huge amenity and I think it deserves the kind of, the kind of focus and thinking and visioning that we've done for other parks in the city. It's bigger than Zilker Park, for example, and it has the potential to be that much more of an amenity for the whole city. So thank you for bringing this. I think I would support a little bit more time, maybe, you know, I started to say September, but we're already into September, maybe October or something like that. I just wouldn't put it off for very long because I do think it'd be good to show the community some progress and also use the initial dollars for just getting something started. So thanks for doing this.
Councilmember Alter.
Thank you. I appreciate all the work that went into this and understanding, you know, when we do look at parks, we very often are aspirational about where we want to go and it takes sometimes decades to build them out. And this is an enormous park and that's going to happen. I'm fine with taking more time. I just wanted to throw out a permutation that might give us the time that we need, which is that we could think of this as the areas. This is a massive land area and it could be that we could pass the vision for the section that we use right now for those renovations and what we want that to look like and be able to make some of the investments that we already have money now to the bathrooms and some of the other things, which I'm not really hearing that that would change a whole lot as we think about some of the other spaces that we might want to think about or the regional partners. And that part, I think, is a little bit more, slightly more constrained for access in terms of how you get there from places outside of Austin. So that would just be something, as we're moving forward, to think about, is there any value in chunking this and having that one section be passed? And we work towards that goal as we work out the vision for the rest of the pieces. Just a thought to consider. Not necessarily for this week, but, you know, in the short run.
Okay. For that program, Councilmember Tovo.
Thanks very much. This is really, like my colleagues, I share the excitement about the plan, about moving forward. This has been, you know, an ongoing, an ongoing interest to community members and I'm really excited to see the conversation. I would certainly support taking a little bit more time on the plan. I'd love the opportunity to really read it more carefully. I did have a couple of quick questions. Could you help me remember, I'm trying to find it in the plan itself, but it's so large, I'm struggling. Can you remind me, Director McNeely, the timeline for the camping?
I'm sorry, the timeline for the?
Camping. Camping.
I think the camping is actually in a Phase Three or a Phase Four, which would, they're not part of the, it's not part of the initial or even the second phase. But just to be clear. But just, just to be clear, what, that's part of the reason why we go back to the community. So when we're ready to do something else, we need to go back to the community and say, well, this was our recommendation for the phases. Does this still make sense or should it be something else? Um, so even though it's in phase three, that doesn't mean that in a, in five years, if we're ready to go back and, and do some major development, that, that wouldn't move up instead of being in, in three or four, it wouldn't move up to, to second or, or, you know, part one C or something of that nature.
So I guess, I, you know, I love, I, I mean, I absolutely support making sure it on the things that would make immediate, immediate amenities for places that are already being enjoyed. But I wonder if some of the elements, like the camping, um, might be something that could be done relatively in a, I have no idea what it costs to create a campsite. I would just, you know, I'm looking around and seeing the, what I perceive as a really renewed interest in camping right now, uh, because of the pandemic and wondering if that might not be the kind of amenity we want to roll out more quickly.
Yeah, I think.
I have seen so much on social media about people camping and I can tell you camp, everything from camp stoves to, uh, you know, all kinds of other camping supplies are sold out because of the renewed interest. So I just, I wonder about that kind of, if, if it's relatively inexpensive and quick to get something, some of those elements. I'm just using that one as an example. That would allow, um, enjoyment of, of new areas of the park, whether those couldn't current, also be embedded. Those considerations couldn't also be embedded into the timeline. That's a, and time consuming, but some of them might be in a later phase, but could be accomplished, um, relatively inexpensively and quickly and could, could get embedded. But maybe you've already taken those kinds of considerations into account when determining your phasing. It wasn't completely clear to me what the phasing, how the phasing was.
Yeah. So I think, I think you bring up very good points, Councilmember Tovo, and what a difference a year makes, right? I mean, last year, when we were thinking that we were bringing it forward, we had chosen those two particular phases. And frankly, the two particular phases that were chosen were because we believed those to be the ones that might be able to help best support the park, um, through different revenue streams. But we're in a different, you know, it's a year later and, and when we start the development, it might be a little bit of a different time. So again, that goes back to important for us to re-engage the community to determine what's probably the most appropriate thing to do second. Um, so I, I, I hear you loud and clear and I understand that that's something we might want to consider as we, as we begin the park development.
Thank you. Um, and again, I haven't had an opportunity to really review the vision plan carefully to, to look at how carefully it engages or how thoroughly it engages in funding opportunities. I know we, I heard a couple mentioned bonds and other kinds of funding terms, choices, um, of possibility or A-trus. Um, I would just mention a couple other things. Uh, somewhere in your slide, you talked about kind of a welcome center, a vision center. It's my memory of our conversations about the hotel occupancy tax that visitor centers and information centers are eligible expenses under hotel occupancy tax revenue, um, as are, I believe, some of the other elements, like the lodge, uh, you know, other, other things that are really aimed at increasing visitors from, out-of-town visitors at this site, would I would, I would argue be eligible for hotel occupancy tax. So I hope that will be a, a large consideration for funding opportunities here.
Yes, ma'am.
That's it for the moment. Oh, oh, no, no. One last question. Could you sort of briefly encapsulate the golf alternative?
Yeah. So, um, the golf alternative was, uh, in a, took up approximately one-third of the park. Um, it was, uh, right along the water's edge and it also traversed, um, transmission slash, uh, distribution lines from, from, uh, um, Austin Energy. Um, the, uh, final survey that the department took, uh, to determine whether or not golf was an, um, an agreeable amenity or something that was widely, um, widely, widely desired by the users. Um, we found that it, it was not the number one thing that people were looking for. Uh, we did do some additional exploration with the, um, with PGA and we did do some additional exploration with, uh, other community members to determine, uh, funding opportunities and the amount of money that, how that, that revenue stream might be able to help support the park. And it really became, um, as time went on, it really became less and less clear of any sorts of commitments by, uh, other entities who want to partner with us. And so, um, because the community had said, uh, this is the desired, um, vision that we have for the, for the, uh, park, that is the one that we brought forward instead of, uh, the, the second or the third alternative of having a golf course.
Thanks for that summary. I, I was part of those initial conversations, um, when there was a proposal, a private proposal to develop a portion of this as a golf course. And I wasn't sure in looking through your table of contents. And then we did get some emails about it as well, whether, whether that was the alternative that was explored in this vision plan. So thank you for both providing that context, but also giving us the summary about what the conclusion was. You know, that, to me, um, several of us felt that that conversation was moving too quickly without a consideration for other potential uses of this space. And so, you know, it seems to me that that request for a more deliberative process shows exactly, you know, why, why that is the best approach. Because, uh, it, with more community engagement and more conversation about alternatives and alternative public uses, it sounds as if the community has, from what you're saying, the community came around to a very different position than was the one, you know, when it was on the council agenda, moving through at, at what I would say was a rapid pace. So thank you. Thanks for, thanks for that summary. And thanks too for that, for, you know, what I interpret to be a reminder of the importance of really implementing the process. That's very much about talking with the community and not just talking to the community quickly, but doing that more, uh, that really more challenging, longer-term work of, of, um, community engagement.
So I would join in, uh, my colleagues in, in thanking, uh, you and your staff, as well as the community that participated in this. Obviously a huge undertaking, uh, and, and incredible opportunity and, and promise for this property. Um, I would also join in, uh, not bringing this up the suite to allow those initial conversations to take place. And then maybe out of the very first of those, uh, you could determine whether or not it made sense to bring back that first phase. It's, uh, consistent with what, uh, uh, council member Alter, uh, suggested. Uh, as part of the conversations associated with this and the, and the suite of, of opportunities, um, I think it is important for us to figure out, uh, the Expo Center. Uh, and, and there've been, you know, some resolutions that have come from the, the council on that. Know exactly what is that, which that be? You know, it's not in this best state of repair right now and there is expressed interest to that. So trying to figure out, uh, how that might be approached. I've never seen, uh, economic analysis of the different alternatives in terms of how much they generate, is the business plan associated with different alternatives? So it's always been a hole in, in my mind and trying to wrap my head around it. Uh, there have been conversations, uh, about the hot tax and getting a feel for just how much, uh, head and bed revenue, uh, something that there generates, uh, also something that I've never, uh, seen. But I, I would love to have as part of the, the conversations that are, that are, that are, you know, appreciated. Uh, continuing, a lot of people that haven't had a chance to speak yet, the mayor pro tem and then council member Ellis.
Um, thank you for all this discussion from my colleagues. I was curious, is a way to look at this more like, um, I, I hear the concerns about the, um, the initial price tag, but then I'm also hearing that this is, um, you know, a vision. So is, 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 you know, like, for example, the Project Connect vision map right now, we don't have the funding for every single thing on there, but it's just, uh, this is, once we get the funding, this is what this system would look like. Is this, is that a similar? And obviously you don't have, you know, all the studies. There's a, there's a, it's not a, a, apples to apples, but is that a way to understand this?
I, I think that's a good way to, to kind of, to look at it, yes. That it's so big, we, we never envisioned, the Parks and Recreation Department never intended, nor did we envision, nor do I believe we communicated to the community that everything would be done at once. But we have a plan so that when opportunities become available, grants from Texas Parks and Wildlife Partnerships, those sorts of things, we can engage the community and say, great, we have this great opportunity. Let's, what do we want to apply it to and, and let's get that part of it done. But without a plan, it's hard for us to be able to, um, for us to be able to take advantage of those opportunities. So I think you summarized it well.
Okay. So it doesn't, and, and does it, trying to compare this to other, all the other things we learn in this job, does it create a situation where this is like a shovel-ready thing? So when that grant becomes available, we, we say, look, we have this vision. This is why this grant for, um, you know, half a million in volleyball courts, because we have this plan that shows these, where the volleyball courts are going to go. Is that kind of a similar?
Yes, that, that too. It, it helps us with the shovel-ready. There may be, I don't want to be disingenuous and say there might not be other things that we would have to do to be completely shovel-ready, but it's a huge step in that direction so that there might be a minor thing that we need to get done to be able to apply for a grant or another opportunity.
Okay. And then this might be, I'm sorry if this was answered in council member Tovo's questions, but the, I'm assuming the plan can be nimble in that there, you know, um, there's a new sport that comes along and, you know, it could, where, where right now we have, you know, I just keep using volleyball, volleyball courts. I don't even know if they're in there, but, you know, people, in 10 years, people hate volleyball or something like it, it, it does. Approving this still allows us to be nimble in, in, in changes, right?
Absolutely. So what I, what I tried to do, and maybe it wasn't successful, is talk about the fact that there's some foundational concepts would say, that says that here's where you can put certain kinds of development. Then there's conceptual concepts, which are the features or the amenities, which will change over 10 years, just like you said. Volleyball may no longer be a sport that anyone wants to play, but some sport that we have, we've yet to conceive or even understand is now, now something that everybody would like for us to, to build. And we have to be nimble like that.
Okay. And the last question, um, my, my visits to this park had been primarily for running events and I did my first, uh, couple of triathlons there. Um, and so I'm curious, and I'm sorry again if I missed this, um, have we reached out to that community? Because I know like, and then I may be saying this wrong, but like, you know, we have a, we have a partnership with different private organizations for Zoker and Auditorium Shores because there's, there are specific kinds of events there, like live music, you know? And, and so they kind of partner with us and help us maintain that area because they use it for their live music. And so have, have we had conversations with like these athletic groups who, who use this park? I, I've done the Decker Challenge there. I've done the, um, a couple of different sprint triathlons. And so, um, um, and it's always been great for, for those purposes. And I think it, you know, there's an opportunity to make it even better for, for those kinds of sports.
Yes, we absolutely did. And they were actually part of a focus group, um, conversation. I know I kept focusing on, um, when I said events, I was focusing a lot on music and performance art, but they were, they were part of that group of events. So running events and, and, um, marathons and triathlons, that, that's an event for us too.
Okay, awesome. All right. Thank you.
Uh, council member Ellis, I think it's.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, I'm in agreement with, uh, a lot of my colleagues about wanting more time to kind of think through the phasing and the funding and kind of what our options would be. Um, I'm curious if, if this is on the green line or near the potential for a green line, has there been thought to, um, entry and access points for people who might want to utilize that in the future? Or conversations around a circulator to make sure people can use all the different portions of this, this park? Should they decide to go and not, um, take their own vehicle? Is that something that's been part of this planning process?
So council member Ellis, you broke up just a little bit. Did I hear you say green, green line and transportation?
Yeah. I wanted to think about if, uh, there, if it's near the green line and if there would be a stop for people who would want to use it in the future.
Yeah. So the answer to the question is yes. We've, we've considered public transportation options and how people might be able to access the park without using their vehicle. I know the plan exactly specifically showed pedestrian and bike, but we also considered public transportation and bus stops.
Okay. And is there any, uh, talk about a circulator for people who may want to get to a different area of the park to use a different asset, um, but maybe can't use their bike or, or take their car?
I think that would be a great idea for when we have the design process. I think it was spoken about, obviously because it's so large. And there's actually a trail that, um, connects the entire system, but I don't know that we spoke specifically about, uh, um, about a, a people mover within the park system, but it's certainly something that we could consider. And I did want to just mention that there is, um, a planned or a proposed bus, uh, bus stop on the north side of the park. So that's, uh, someone just texted me to let me know that I should tell you that we already, there is already a proposed, um, bus stop.
Okay. That's fantastic. And I'll, I'll take a closer look at that. And, um, I'm kind of curious about, you know, what amenities are going to be offered where? So making sure there's, there's restrooms available or, you know, places to get water or food or things like that, um, which it sounds like you're already thinking about. I just want a little more time also to kind of review that and understand all those different layers.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Councilmember Tovo?
One other thing I wanted to just mention, um, and thank you, China, for reminding me about this on my stuff. Uh, we had had conversations in the past about the decommissioning of Decker, of the Decker Power Plant and whether there would be any funding possible through, um, through that project. You know, it's very, not always, but sometimes, um, when we have a public infrastructure project, um, there are mitigation funds that go to the parks. And so, uh, we had asked Austin Energy about that at some point. And I don't know if you've had any additional conversations about whether there would be any funds coming forward, um, from Austin Energy to help mitigate the impact on that area, um, through the life of that power, power plant and whether those, you know, cause that would be another funding source that could be reinvested in the park.
Sure. At the time of our conversations, we did include AE. They were part of, uh, they were part of our, um, our stakeholder group. And at the time, when we began to discuss this, the AE was not in a place to help us understand exactly the future of that particular power plant nor any sort of timeframe for, for decommissioning. But, um, absolutely, they're good partners with us. And so I'm sure that when the time is appropriate, we can re-explore and re-engage on that particular topic.
It's decom, it's being decommissioned by 2020, you know, fully decommissioned by 2022. So I think that that is, I think that time is right now to have that conversation. And I see, you know, the Holly Power Plant as a precedent in that. There were mitigation funds that, um, were used for, for the park, um, as well as, I think, for the lead mitigation program, which, um, we had an opportunity to recognize Johnny Lemon last week. He was very, he and Ruby Roan helped get the word out about, about, um, the lead mitigation programs and it went that moment to slip by without mentioning their involvement in that. But it, this is, I think as a city, we have a precedent for when we decommission those power plants for reinvesting in, in, um, the surrounding area in acknowledgement that there is damage to the, physical damage, um, to the land around, around those power plants. And so, and I'm just looking back, I think I even have language in the gen plan, language from the gen, generation plan about that.
We will absolutely re-engage with them.
Thank you. And let's put it, um, I'll put it on the agenda too as well for our AE meeting to talk about at our next AE meeting. But if you, probably will have an opportunity to have a conversation sooner. And I think that could be a very good source of, of some additional funding.
Okay. Alex, any more comments on this report before we let, uh, Director McNeely leave? All right. Kimberly, thank you so much for the presentation. Thank your staff.
Mayor, council member Harper Madison had her hand up.
Well, I'm sorry.
It's okay. I, I tried to, I tried to raise it extra high this time too. Uh, fortunately, it's, it's, it's super brief. Um, I just wanted to, uh, again, say thank you to Director McNeely and the team for all the work that they've put into this. It, it, it's clear that, you know, the, the size, the magnitude of what it is that we are potentially about to accomplish here, especially for the Eastern Crescent, a community that, you know, as a city in terms of atonement, right? We have some, we have some making up to do. And I really appreciate that we are finally moving in the direction of bringing the types of amenities and the types of, um, care, concern, consideration to this, to my community, um, finally. It, it, it feels good. And I know that there are a lot of people that are very excited. There were two things that were mentioned that I actually sort of forgot, especially because like I said, I've, I've got a laundry list of questions and I know that we've been back. and I know that we've been back and forth a lot of these things already. So I don't have to say it here, you know, we've already been talking about some of these things, including, I think it was really interesting, the concept that Councilmember Tovo brought up about maybe accelerating the pace at which we engage in the camping component. I think moving that up to an earlier phase is a really good idea and I hope that during the course of our next couple of conversations, we get the opportunity to explore that. I also really appreciate what Councilmember Alter said about being able to go ahead and make those initial investments on infrastructure. Because ultimately, when I say, I think we need to make sure to take the time necessary to make the appropriate next steps, it's because what we don't want to do is be inefficient or, you know, have a project that's going to already be costly, cost more than it needs to because we didn't take the appropriate steps sequentially. In which case, I really think that's a good idea to go ahead and just sort of be mindful about making that initial investment in infrastructure that doesn't necessarily affect the other elements. Then lastly, the question that Councilmember Tovo brought up about golf really reminded me of a question that I had, reminded me of a question that I had about, I think it was slide number 12. There's a section about a golf clubhouse. And given that, I know that you guys have engaged in the same conversations that I am and it doesn't seem to me as though what the community wants from this, you know, really massive and amazing asset is golf. So I'm just, I'm wondering why there's a golf clubhouse on this slide? Is it for disc golf or golf-golf?
Well, I would have to say that it was not intended to be golf-golf and I will have to double-check for you because that might just be my user error, me putting together this slideshow and not combing through old information and.
Okay.
Looking it up. So please know that there's no, we're not trying to trick anyone and put a slide of golf course in there under your nose because we put a golf clubhouse in there. That would just completely be my error. But there is the distinct possibility that it's disc golf, so I'll just need to make sure I go back and look at the slides a little more closely so I can confirm that for you.
You'd have to get up pretty early in the morning to get it over on me, Director McNeely. Well, thank you, I appreciate that. I look forward to that clarification.
Okay.
And thank you and your team again. I know this is a lot of, a lot of work and a lot of sweat. So we really wholeheartedly appreciate all the effort that has gone into it so far and look forward to moving forward in a way that's really going to get us what it is that we're hoping to accomplish. And I can't wait for my grandbabies to play at this park.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I think that's it. Colleagues, it is 11:33. Our executive session, we have four things. We have the discussion of compensation for three of our appointees. We have a conversation with the manager. My question to you right now is, do you want a break here at 11:30 and come back in executive session to take up all of them at 11:30? Or do you want to go into executive session for 30 minutes and receive information from HR relative to the first three and then break for lunch? Mayor Pro Tem?
If my colleagues wouldn't mind, I prefer to go now because I unfortunately have some commitments that I will not be available after noon. So I was just wondering if we can go in just for 30 minutes and at least I could participate in the 30 minutes of it.
Okay, never to have objection to that. All right, then let's.